Good morning. I'd like to convene the January 7, 2025 Carver County Board Meeting. Let's start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is to look for nominations for the Chair for 2025.
Mr. Hemsey, nominate Tom Workman to be our next Board Chair.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations. All in favor of Commissioner Workman for Board Chair for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same. Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Why don't we get the Vice Chair? I'll have you as like a Vice Chair then.
Okay.
You can do that, or we take a recess and do that.
All right. Nominations are open for the election of a Vice Chair for 2025.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Lisa Anderson to be our next Vice Chair.
I would decline that nomination, and I would like to nominate Commissioner Lynch as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Look for other nominations, Commissioner.
Any other nominations? Don't underestimate my ability to be both, guys. J six. For the second time, I'll ask for nomination for Vice Chair. Open, keep it open. Third time, anybody, any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing no others? Commissioner Lynch? All those in favor for Commissioner Lynch for Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Close, opposed? Congratulations. Congratulations to you, sir. I think at this time, we will take a moment, a timeout, to get reset.
Yep, want a recess?
Recession. Chair, you ready to roll?
I am. All right.
All right, public comments. Public comments that relate to an item on the agenda may be heard when that agenda item is discussed. Please limit your comments, public comments, to five minutes or less. Do I have anybody in the audience who would like to make some comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to community announcements. Commissioner Anderson, do you have a community announcement?
I don't know if I have a community announcement, but I would just like to take a moment and thank so many people who supported me during the election, but mostly I want to thank so many people who I've got a chance to meet and talk to since I've been elected. Thank you to my fellow commissioners who've been very generous with their time, and we've had good conversations about how we're going to work together. I thank you to County Attorney Metz and Sheriff Camerud, who also were very generous with their time. I was overwhelmed by how much time you're willing to give me, so I appreciate that. And to the division heads, who I've got to spend some time with, get to know a little bit more about the county. I think it's different. I was on a school board for a number of years. It's very different when you're sitting on this side, once you're elected. And so getting to know a little bit about the county, I think when someone new comes in with different ideas, it's dangerous sometimes. There's a danger of kind of asserting your own way, and yet I was met with openness and kindness and professionalism, and I just feel very blessed, and I think the county is blessed to have so many great leaders. So, but I have to do a special shout out to the MVP of my orientation, which is Krista Worlett, and I know she's angry with me right now, but scheduled so many meetings, we spent a whole lot of time on the phone, and I'm just very grateful for her and for all of you, and I just feel very warmly welcomed, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you in the next year.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Good to have you. It's been a long time since we've had you. Well, four years since we've had a change, but we have not had a female on this board since, I believe, Julianne Ortman in about 2002. So, nice change. You're no Gail Degler, but I plan to say his name every meeting. God bless him in his retirement, but good to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Uderman?
Congratulations, Lisa. Welcome, and congratulations, Tom, Board Chair. It's an important time for our county. I think that was part of your mention as well. I've often said the next 20 years shapes the next 200 years, and there's a lot of opportunity for us in 2025 in a lot of different ways, and so I've always urged myself and my peers to be transparent in what are the things that you want to accomplish, what are the things that you want to go for, what's the vision for the future? And so for me, my priorities come down to three things on behalf of the residents, as I knocked 9,000 doors three times in the election cycle myself. One is culture, is to further what we already have and then improve upon. We're supposed to be the best place to live, work, and play, and that doesn't happen without good managers, good community, and good supports of those. So that's one of my commitments for 2025. The second one is I had a commitment to lowering the tax rate, and we've heard time and time again, if there was anything the loudest that I heard when I talked to people, and I'm guessing Lisa can echo this as well, is my gosh, it's just too much, and I wish there was a state law that when you got your taxes, it broke out the percentage by school district, by city, and by county, because by and large, at least in the house I live in, the city tax is by far the largest increase, so the bottom line doesn't always show that. But I think we owe it to our constituents to deliver on what it is that they wanted. This isn't Matt's agenda. This is the agenda that they asked me to do in the next four years as I'm elected, and I just think our tax rate is creeping up and becoming unaffordable, particularly in two groups. One is the seniors that are trying to downsize, and then second of all, it's people my age or around my age that are trying to raise families. Those are the two focal areas. And then the third thing, at least for me from a focal point, is how do we keep an eye on amenities for those young families and those multi-generational amenities? It's not lost on me that the, being the largest, fastest growing county that is highest affluent, our median house value is higher here than anywhere else. It lacks affordability, which I often say is for that first-time school teacher. First-time school teacher making $45,000 to $48,000 a year, where do they live? And I think that for too long, we've missed that missing middle, and there's no one person or place to blame. There's a lot of opportunity for us to do here, but that's not just that school teacher. It's a first-time sheriff's deputy. It's somebody that works in our clerical work. It's people that work when we go out to their restaurants, and so those are my commitments and my priorities based on what I heard from my constituents. Moving on from that, I had the chance, I talk a lot about District 112. It's not lost on me, I'm the only commissioner that has school-aged kids, and when you're at soccer practices, softball practices, basketball practices, you look at it differently. And I had a chance to go to the Southwest Christian basketball game. They were playing Minnehaha Academy. And one thing that was super heartfelt was, not only was the second biggest scorer in the state of Minnesota history on the court, Eddie Mack, that signed a D1 scholarship, but they stopped the game late in the game because one of the gals had scored 1,000 points. Wasn't on our team, wasn't on Southwest Christians team, but the whole stadium stopped, they brought out posters, and there was a standing ovation. This was the opposing team on our home court, and I just thought that was great, that they took that chance to honor somebody for what she had accomplished, even though she was a competitor, even though we wanted to beat the heck out of them. We stopped and paused and recognized that accomplishment. Two more things, then I'll be done. I had a chance to, over break, go to feed my starving children, and that is in Carver County, and it was cool because Brooklyn's basketball team, one of the gals organized that. And so the give back of the community, I know that there's a lot of people within our staff and our community that are doing those things, and when you live in Minnesota, you're not braggadocious about those things, but I just thought it was super cool to see that team interact and compete on behalf of people and learn a little bit more about hunger and different things. And then finally, I just wanted to say with Lisa and myself getting four more years, we've all gone through election cycles, there's also an abundance of people that have hung it up as of yesterday or today. And so I wanted to recognize a number of those people, a number of City Council members, former mayor in Chaska. One person stepped off on the Victoria Board City, and there's dozens and dozens of others. So thank you for your service, those that have already done and completed, and those are my comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just Happy New Year to everyone, especially the employees of Carver County. Bring in 2025 with excitement, and just Happy New Year, and Lisa, welcome to the Carver County Board. They're thoroughly going to enjoy it. Couple other just community announcements, Mr. Chair. Some January updates from the desk of Tammy McCullough, who's the Regional Director and the Carver County Extension Office. With the promise of a fresh year ahead, we're excited to share updates, opportunities, and resources to support your goals in 2025, and a couple of those examples are is strategic farming. Let's Talk Crops in 2025. Join us this winter to discuss some of the key issues and questions around commodity crop production facing Minnesota farmers and other ag professionals today through the Strategic Farming Let's Talk Crops webinar series. This live online program will provide up-to-date, research-based information to help optimize your crop management strategies for 2025. Sessions will be held over Zoom from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. on Wednesdays, starting tomorrow, the 8th through March 22nd. So you can learn more and register more at the link. And then also for 2025 is Women in Ag Network Conference. This registration is now open for the 2025 Extension Women in Ag Network Conference. This one-day conference will take place on Tuesday, February 11th, at the Park Event Center in Wake Park, Minnesota. That's new this year, is a pre-session before on Monday, February 10th. So this year's theme is Farming Your Way: Creating Balance. Reflects how every farm and role is unique, and that finding your place means discovering the balance that works best for you, your farm, your family, and your goals. So please check out the University of Minnesota Extension website and also the Carver County Extension newsletter for further details. And another hot topic this time of year, Mr. Chair, is mosquitoes. We got the reports from the Metropolitan Minnesota Control District, and I sat on that board in 2025, or excuse me, 2024, and learned quite a bit about mosquitoes, and just some stats that I want to share with you. Larva control for Chaska and Carver in 2024, they treated almost 300-some acres. And by doing that control, it just really focuses on to being helpful to people, pets, and the wildlife in that area. Unfortunately, most of the customer calls slash complaints about mosquitoes came out of the Chaskin-Carver area with 488 calls, and if you can recall, with the flooding of the Minnesota River, that's what drove a lot of those calls. So we do encourage people on the mosquito control board to call in and voice your concerns and your complaints. Camden Township, Camden Township is basically surrounds the city of New Germany. In that area, we treated almost 80 acres for adult mosquitoes and the larvae control, and there were four customer calls coming out of Camden. In Dogren Township, they treated a little over 200-some acres, and there were 16 calls that came out of Dogren. So now with the lack of no snow with the winter, we'll see how the mosquitoes for 2025. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fahy, I don't recall us having this issue in 2023 when I was serving on that board, but I'll just leave that dangling out there for a little while. Commissioner Lynch?
And I also remember last year, we didn't think we were going to have any issues either, because it was like this. We didn't have any snow, and then we had a lot of spring rain, so I would like to welcome Commissioner Anderson. It's going to be wonderful. I had a chance to visit with her numerous times, and I think she's going to be a wonderful addition to our board. Congratulations with Commissioner Workman being Chair. I know we're going to have a lot of humor as we operate this, so that's absolutely wonderful. I never heard anyone praise Metz before, Commissioner Anderson, so. With that, that's it. I look forward to a wonderful 2025.
And congratulations to you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Lynch, we've been hanging around a long time.
Yes, we have.
Okay. Agenda review and adoption. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chair, there is an amendment. The agenda should be on your desk, related to the newspaper. We consider that a friendly change.
What's a newspaper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we scrambled last minute to put together that bit.
Okay, how do we stick this on our motion?
Awesome amendment to the agenda as item 2.5. It's on the concern. We're proposing that as on the concern.
Okay, so I'm assuming the motion by Uderman and the second by Anderson, correct?
Amended, yep.
We'll accept the amendment, okay? Seeing that motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, opposed? Motion passes. Board operating rules. We do have some changes, some ideas for changes. I know that Administrator Hemsey placed a change in there. Must be predicting that it is popular. What page is that on, Dave?
Related to videotaping.
Yeah.
I think on page eight, under broadcasting. So I propose that you livestream all meetings, including work sessions. That's noted.
Since it's already in there, do we need to make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, you'll need to. Each year, Mr. Chair, board members, the board is asked by statute to adopt these operating rules. So yeah, we'll be looking for a motion to approve. The other changes I have are pretty minimal, or changes to the address of a website, et cetera. Commissioner Uderman did propose three amendments which are attached. I would suggest if you're, if you want to, get this on the table, the change with the work sessions, get that on the table. Get a second, and then Matt could go through. I would suggest one at a time to see if the board wants to adopt your amendments to that main motion.
Okay, so I need a motion changing the language on page eight, under broadcasting, to include taping of our work sessions.
So moved. Ah, second. Okay, I'll take it. I'll take the motion.
I got a motion by Anderson and a second by Uderman.
Mr. Chair.
Discussion.
Just a clarification, then. There are a few other, again, minor changes, so with the motion maker and seconder, you're okay with whatever changes I propose. The rest of them are grammatical or corrections to website address.
So the motion includes everything that has been changed. In the legislature, they call that the revisers bill.
Yes, sir.
I always voted against it because nobody knew what was in it.
This one's pretty simple.
Right. So, agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. So I have a motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt you. I would suggest that, this would be the point, to consider the amendments on page 15.
Okay, we're going to make it all in one pile? I thought we were going to get one out of the way.
You can do it either way, I suppose, but either way, I think it would be appropriate to do it now. Just tack those on to the changes that have already been approved.
Except that we have a motion and a second to discuss as it is, and then, so then we'd have to change the motion and the second.
Through an amendment, which is on page 18. You can do it either way, Mr. Chair. You could get that done and then consider the amendments.
Well. Is Commissioner Anderson making a part of her motion, the three other?
I would propose discussing those separately, but.
Okay. Okay, why don't we take the vote on the recording of the work sessions and get that out of the way?
Sounds good.
And all the other changes that, grammaticals that might be in it, so. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, opposed? Motion passes. Amendment, the Uderman Amendment Number One. Monthly expense allowance.
Well, Mr. Chair, all three of these relate to the first one that just passed, which is transparency, public transparency. And none of these are new. They've been brought up in past years, but there was one individual that was expensing broadband. That's no longer an issue. I just want to close the gap on that for the first one. I think it leaves us some exposure and some lack of transparency and the potential for others to maybe want to exploit this in the future. I just want to close it down by saying home broadband can't be expensed, or if we are to spend out of our allowance, we can do so, to do so. So that's the amendment number one.
Okay, is that a motion?
I would, yes, move that.
Mr. Chair, could I clarify? You're also proposing, as in, listen on page 18, there's another sentence regarding home technical support.
Yep, same thing.
If I could, Mr. Chair, what's the second said? Any outsider home technical support requires separate board approval.
Yeah, so this was brought by a staff member that found that because of our work from home, a good amount of people work from home, there were some people that were taking tech support at home that were commissioners, that were not staff, and the staff were not being allowed to have tech support at home. And so to bring it in parity and for clarity, if we, the board, could get tech support, just simply run through the board and say we need tech support at home for X, Y, or Z. And then if there's staff that's needed, it needs some form of approval, because I think that could be a slippery slope. Especially in the era of work from home and technology and whatnot, if we're going to send somebody out to different folks' homes, that could be quite a bit of expense, and I think bringing it through the board would be a point of clarity and transparency.
So I have a technical question related to that, then. Does, do at-home, work-from-home county employees have access to this, to technical support?
Not at-home tech support. Other employees, including myself, if you have an issue, the IT worker has the ability to tap in remotely, or we have a lot of printer issues. I've brought my printer in before, so that can take care of that. So no, I think this is a good change, just to clarify.
Yeah, I think consistency between what we do for employees and commissioners makes sense.
Well, and I think it fits in with the broadband, if that's, if that could be a possible problem. So I've never had the county pay for that, so, okay, so I have clarity. Do I have a second on that amendment?
My second.
Okay, I got a motion by Uderman and a second by Anderson on amendment, the Uderman Amendment Number One. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, so the verbiage is what we're using here because of the commentary that came with the motion. He had, Mr. Uderman had stated also that we could take other expenses from other accounts. I don't know if he was implying that if someone wanted to expense their broadband, that they could take it from some other account.
No, we all get an expense. We get certain dollars amount every month as commissioners, and if we wanted to use that dollars to pay for a broadband, that could be a source. We don't itemize those things.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, that this is the language, not the commentary.
Correct. Language as proposed. I'd also add, there was language to allow for broadband reimbursement in a previous version. It might have been a year, maybe two years ago. That was struck. So sometimes it helps me when you have clear language, because I'll sort of question a lot. I'm not sure. So this would be helpful, to say broadband reimbursement is not allowed.
Period. I've got my eye on some sheriff's accounts. We'll be able to take it out. Big, big account. Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Lynch?
Only that the outsider home technical support is, it has to have a separate board approval. Only that it's going to slow down the process, so if you, your computer goes down to home, and then all of a sudden, you're going to have to wait for the next meeting, we approve it, and then you're going to be without your internet, and we're the decision-makers for the county.
Well, Mr. Chair, let me add a clarification. This is for in-home, which means a worker actually physically goes out and visits your house to fix something. We still will provide remote access. I think that's the better way to do it. I think that's the better way to do it, quite frankly. So IT staff, again, they can, they can tap right into your computer, take it over, kinda scary almost, remotely, and help you out. And, and if not, if that, if that doesn't work, you can bring your laptop in. And again, printers, sometimes we just say, hey, bring it in, because it's easier. So, so it's very workable for other employees. And, you know, having, having folks go out to, to do in-home, kinda doctor in-home visits, not the best idea in terms of practice, I don't think.
Good clarification.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have a lot more whiskey to myself. They were just stopping by. How's your computer? Not true. That was not true. Okay. So we have the, uh, Uderman amendment number one and a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Uderman amendment number two.
Yeah, again, uh, this has been brought up before. It shouldn't come in as any surprise. I think that we're all duly elected, um, five votes, uh, try and get to consensus the best that we can. Uh, and this simply says that anybody that's duly elected can bring forth, uh, an agenda item, and then it's in the board's, board chair's discretion as to what future agenda item it goes on, um, so that we can represent our districts equally.
Mr. Chair, I could, I could add a couple of clarifications to this item, if you want me to. I think I provide to all of you a, a nice graphic that Ari put together, showing that the timeline related to agenda packet separation, distribution. And keep that in mind when we're talking about this, because it's, it's always the board's agenda in the end. The majority of the board votes on the final agenda. And a lot of the discussion in here is talking about preparing it, right? And getting it, getting it in shape to get it out the door on Thursday, which Krista does a nice job. I would agree. Thank you. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff going on, right? So, so this would, that to me is, is relevant here, uh, as we're packaging up a draft packet, draft agenda. This language would say, any board member can come to me and place an item on that draft packet, so it'd get out, published. Again, keep in mind, the board always has the authority to adopt it in the end. So, but it's up to the board how you wanna manage that. In the, in the past, of course, I've worked directly with the chair and vice chair in particular, trying to put packets together, and there's some art behind the science of what goes on consent, what doesn't. Uh, I, you know, sometimes we struggle with, if you add something real late, that's, that's got some meat to it, you know, we need staff to get ready for that. So all those things go into, into this issue. Uh, but it's up to the board. You know, really, really, to me, what it boils down to gives a board chair a little more authority over packaging that proposed packet. But again, in the end, any member, right now, well, he actually adopted the agenda, but prior to adoption this morning, you could have said, this morning, it put, put an item on. And if it survived a majority vote, it'd be on the agenda. But, so this is mainly about the, the, it's kind of a process, up, lead, mainly leading up to that Thursday.
So it would, it would be, it'd be the reverse of that. It would be on the agenda and then the board at agenda approval and adoption could make a motion to say, we don't wanna talk about that today. Right?
It's possible, yes.
Chair, i- isn't, um, may I?
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. Um, isn't that always possible? I mean, when we had, when we adopt the agenda, there's always a possibility of striking something or adding something, correct?
Yep.
Um, so the distinction, Commissioner, uh, Uderman, what is the distinction of, uh, this item versus, you know, the, the board's ability to change the agenda on, on board day? And I will ask another question, too. Is what is our statutory obligation with giving notice when we add or take something off? So I'm gonna ask those two questions.
Let's take the second one first.
Yeah.
And Mark can, Mark can jump in, uh, but generally we want three days' notice for meetings. You can hold an emergency meeting with a shorter timeframe, but you can add items to the agenda up to the last minute. Now, now, correct me, Mark, if I'm wrong there. But, but it's a bad practice, I would say.
Agreed.
Because that, you don't, what you wanna do is not surprise anybody, including the public, right? So preferably you get that lead time, and, and of course, you know, a big part of this, too, is I'm always trying to work with commissioners, division directors, Krista, others, to try and package things up and get ready, right? And, and make it a good productive conversation. And so you're kind of weighing that piece, too, but, yeah, you could, you know, right, in 1.7 this morning was agenda review and adoption. You could have said, hey, let's, let's add a big item on here. It's awkward and, you know, we may not be ready for it, but the board could say, well, no, let's not do that, because it will be awkward and the board's not ready for it, right?
So then, in, in this instance, the Uderman amendment actually is better?
It's, it's a, I would say, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's a policy question for you in terms of the authority you wanna give the board chair upfront. In particular, again, pre that Thursday distribution of a packet. You know, 'cause, you know, think about some, some of the big issues that might come through late on a Thursday morning, when, you know, Krista and I are always scrambling. And if any commissioner had the ability to say, hey, add something to the agenda that's significant, and I had, I had no authority nor the board chair, then it's on. At least the proposed agenda, and then we're scrambling to get going. You know, my preference would be, let's work together, let's pick a different date, uh, or let's have some sort of a board discussion about whether that should even be on the agenda at all or not, right? So again, it's really a board call on the, on the role of the chair and, uh, how you wanna manage the agenda packet as it moves through the process.
Thank you, Administrator Hemsey. So I'm gonna, um, ask Commissioner Uderman, um, the first question is, how do you see this amendment different than the current practice?
Yeah, if you just strike those words that are struck, um, currently, one person has the power, and I'm saying give the power to the board. Uh, it paves the way for more discussion, more dialogue, for somebody that might look at it a little bit differently. Right now, that con, that power has been concentrated, at least I think it was flipped three years ago. That power was concentrated on a single person. So if you wanted to bring something forward, JP, myself, agreed with you, maybe Tim didn't, Tom could say, nope, it's not going on there. What I'm proposing is, is you should be able to do that. You should be able to bring that forward. And I'm not bucking the timeline. I respect that timeline, and we talked about that a couple of years ago. It's not, it's not a timeline issue for me. It's a, do you, do you vest that power in one individual, or do you give that power to the people that are equally elected?
In your description of you all agreeing, it's a violation of the open meeting law?
No, no, um, no. Because if we brought, if, if we were to bring forward an agenda item, we, it would be public facing, right? We would say, yes, it goes on.
Here.
They would, they would put it on there. You'd see it as the board chair get to decide, well, maybe it's better this week versus that week or whatever, and then it would be brought forward. And then you would, you more or less paved the way for, for a dialogue versus, as it is now, if you wanted to go rogue and say, nope, not gonna do it, we're not having that conversation, that power would be, uh, completely vested in you as the board chair.
Yeah, and so I, I'm not, uh, I'm not worried about board chair power and authority. Uh, I am worried that a Uderman amendment number two would keep this board here till 5:00 PM every Tuesday. So we might want to amend it about buying pizzas, uh, for the person who adds the agenda, but.
If, if I could, Mr. Chair, it also, it doesn't, if someone brings it up at the last minute, it stops your preparation as another commissioner. Um, we have the packets mailed out by, uh, Krista, and it's emailed out, so you can, you know what's coming up. All of a sudden, this could be something proposed and stops the other commissioners from preparing for it.
Right, Mr. Chair.
But Commissioner Uderman is suggesting that this would be on, when you got, when the packet comes out on Thursday, it would be already on the agenda. Versus now, we have the right to modify the agenda this morning at nine, at 9:00 AM and say, we wanna talk about whatever.
And I'm not concerned about, uh, as a board chair, but your, your job is to make sure that this, uh, meeting flows, and, uh, you had a wonderful point about being here till 5:00, 5:00 PM. Um, I, I think it's simply the, the chair's discretion. So.
Again, Mr. Chair, keep in mind, any Tuesday, a board member could propose adding something to the agenda. Uh, I, I think, you know, maybe we're losing a little sight of what really, you know, the best practice would be, would be to work, work together, uh, have the chair and vice chair and all of you be clear on direction of the board. I think that sometimes has happened where maybe we've walked out of a retreat, I thought an issue might be dead, and, and Matt would, for example, say, well, let's put that in the agenda. I'm like, wait a minute, I thought that board said they don't wanna do that, right? And that's some of the history.
Right.
And I might, I might have been wrong. Sometimes you, you hear things differently in meetings, right? But you al, you always have that ability, but I think even whether the board chair has this authority or not, it takes more than a few days to package some of these meeting issues up. You know, if you need to do the research presentation, your staff lined up. So in either case, I think what we should be trying to do is get as much lead time as we can. I, I think this was your idea, Matt, originally, that future agenda list, that's really helpful, to try and balance things out, uh, and, and predict, which is a pretty tough business to predict, but to try and keep. I know the, the last board, I know we have at least one new member, uh, we'd have trouble getting them to stay over noon, past noon, uh, which is maybe balls and changes, but, but I, that's a cognizant decision for me to try and package an agenda that I think is reasonably, uh, a reasonable length in time.
Mr. Chair, I think the bulk of the conversation is about, about timeline. I mean, the proposal has nothing to do with timeline. The timeline stays as is in honors that three days before, or whatever the timeline is. What I'm proposing be struck as placement of requested item on the proposed agenda requires county board chair approval. So any of us five could bring forth something, and, yeah, it self-polices itself, because you gotta have three votes to carry it forward. So I think it's, I think it's good for the people, if we put it in the, in the, in the, um, the lens of doing what's best for the public. I think this gives greater transparency and greater opportunity for somebody to have their elected official represent them. So I, I'd make a motion to, um, include this agenda, uh, just, adjustment to our board operating rules.
Okay, I've got a motion for the Uderman amendment number two. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. For their discussion, and I, I think, um, again, I don't, I don't need full control of anything, and thanks for the, for the concept that we gotta manage the meeting. We're not doing it too well today, but I'll, I'll get better. The, um, I think this is a, this is a, um, as, as this board builds, uh, more trust and cooperation together and comity, um, I think this is a, let's wait and see amendment. And, and I think we'll, we'll see soon enough. If this is gonna be something that's gonna, for lack of a better word, get us back into the wild, wild west of whatever freedom to roam agendas. So, um, I'm, I'm willing to, to watch and learn and see. I think it is open, open government. I think we all have an equal vote here and, and, uh, but we can always go back and amend our rules, so.
And, and Chair, oh, I'm, sir.
Commissioner Fay.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a, a couple of comments. Just in the wording of the second sentence, uh, the county administrator shall include an item on the proposed agenda, and when you're talking about the proposed agenda, you're not talking about the draft packet that comes out a week prior? Or are they the same thing? Because that clarification of three days, the draft packet is already out.
The proposed agenda is that third, it's really should say packet. Proposed packet that comes out would be that Thursday afternoon packet. We, we do backing up a few steps there. We have a draft agenda, too, but that's not generally what is being referred to here, because once that packet goes out, then it's public. But then it's, then others can see it, uh, staff, staff are more sure, although it's still to be determined, be determined whether it makes the agenda, and then they need to start preparing, right? Which is one of the keys here.
Right, so for example, this morning, we received the draft agenda for the fourteenth meeting. So if anyone on a, a commissioner wanted to add something to that draft, we would just make the call that would call you, Dave, for example, and say, I wanna talk about the mosquito control board, agenda item 1.5. That gets into by Thursday then, which is three days prior. If I made that call on Friday, it would not happen.
Then, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fay, we would have to amend, like we did today, because this came in after Thursday. Amend the proposed agenda, right? And again, keeping in mind, if, if you're saying to me, uh, Minister, we wanna add the, the mosquito control district, I'd try and work with you, right? To, to, well, are they ready to go? And why, why do we need to throw it on so late versus planning a little bit? We'd probably get, do that, quite frankly, and I might not even talk to the chair, depends, because it's non-controversial and, uh, now, something controversial, that's totally different. I would say, well, okay, is there a different way to do this? Can we talk to the chair about it? And then with the current language, the chair would either say yes up or down for that proposed Thursday packet.
Right, and that goes, I think, where that language came into play, and you had mentioned it, uh, Chair Workman is about the preparation, is to be able to be prepared properly when we do talk about it then, that following Tuesday. And say, for example, if we ask Linden to give us an update on Highway 212, and we ask him on Monday, and then we make it an agenda item that Tuesday morning, well, that's not fair to staff then, because he's probably not prepared. And so that's why I just wanna make sure that if we move forward with this, that if there is a change made, that probably ninety percent of our stuff isn't that critical, that it can't wait one more week? I would rather wait that one more week and then have the staff properly prepared to give us the proper information, so we can have that transparency for the public to show that we are prepared.
So Commissioner Fay, you'd, you'd rather have it brought forth and put on the, what are we, the draft agenda that we received this morning for next Tuesday, so prior to that? Is that what you're saying?
In general, yes. And I think that's what's happening still today, but it, when you talk about the three days prior, that's where it gets into the Thursday, basically.
Right, I mean, I don't think if I, if I said, uh, at four o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, this is what I want on the agenda, and Krista's putting it out on Thursday, that that probably is gonna help me, uh, with a, a proper presentation on Tuesday. So do we need to put a timeline in there for how much advanced prior to the, I mean, is the, uh, is the draft agenda done on, on Monday? For a week and a half out?
Well, Mr. Chair, all those, all those timelines are out there. They're set, some of the languages in the board operating rules. So I think, I agree with, with Commissioner Uderman, it's about, really more about the issue. Right, and, you know, be careful here, make up something here. Let's say we're having a budget debate, and we have a retreat, and the, and the board says, generally, uh, we, is the sheriff's office here? We wanna cut. We, we, put it the other way. The three of you say in a retreat, we don't wanna cut the posse. Leave it alone. Well, let's say one of you doesn't like horses or the sheriff, or both, and you, you just don't think it's a good service, right? Currently, the board chair, you could come to the board chair and say, I wanna do that. The board chair could say, no, we decided on that. If you change this, it can be placed on the agenda. Again, it's more of a policy choice, and part of it is just managing, managing agendas and trying to create functional meetings. It's really up to the board, again. Preferably, we, we all work together and try and iron these things out as best as we can, but, but it does, it does give some pretty hefty power to the chair to say.
Currently.
Currently, right. Again, and, uh, we, even with the current rules, that board member could say, on Tuesday morning, I wanna, I wanna propose, I wanna amend the agenda by cutting the posse, proposing to. I could go on the, that, that current language allows for that now. So again, it's always the board's agenda.
But even for, and Mr. Chair, even from a strategic point of view, if, if you wanted to carry that motion forward, that you wanted to, in your example, cut the posse, it would make. it would make sense to get it on the following week's agenda and go through the process and have the conversation, and then have the sheriff be able to prepare a presentation that says, okay, well, this is why we should or should not keep the posse in this example.
Or conversely, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fay, maybe it shouldn't be on the agenda at all.
Mm-hmm.
Because the board has given direction. But that's a simple version of, of what can get pretty complex. You know, again, sometimes we're in a retreat, you know, what exactly was said? What direction you want to go? But, so I think it all, again, boils, boils down to the more on these issues versus timeline, and then the, the authority of the chair to guide the proposed packet, not the final, not the final agenda, the proposed packet.
Com- Commissioner.
I have one, I have a question. If, I want to cut the posse because I hate horses. And we have, I bring it up, and it's, we just talked about, and it's decided, it's voted on, it's four to one. I could bring it up next month too, right? Propose it to be going on the agenda again.
You could, I don't know why you would, if it's already.
I hate, I hate horses, so then keep going forward.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you could, or, you know, again, you could propose it on any Tuesday morning, right?
But right now, and I, my point for the, I said, it's your job to make the, the meeting flow, and it's like, no, we already talked about that, we're not going to put it on the agenda this time.
Commissioner Anderson.
Um, I, I, I do want to reiterate that Commissioner Urdeman is staying within the timeline. So this wasn't a matter of changing up the timeline, but staying with, within the timeline. I think, and again, new here, been doing this half an hour. And so just want to give this a shot. I think that the most important thing is the relationships on this board, right? So if an item came up or was proposed that may be out of context, then a conversation, I'm assuming that there would be a conversation between either the administrator or chair, or both, about maybe this topic should better fit into another topic and have that conversation as well. But I, I have no concerns about this being thrown on at the last minute. That's something that we as board members can do anytime. And I, I'm, I'm game to see how this plays out. And, and my, as a way of just transparency and, and working together as a board.
So what if we changed on line five, the number three to no, to the number 10?
Didn't quite follow you there. So under amendment two?
If a member directs that the item be placed on the proposed agenda at least 10 days prior to the meeting for which the agenda is to be prepared.
And that goes back to my point, Mr. Chair, about the preparation and.
Yep, yep.
And there, again, you're a whole week out and et cetera.
Well, yeah, and if I'm proposing something that I think is important to be on the agenda, then I would want everybody to have, have that. And again, we can change this if, if people start finding horse heads in their beds.
I knew that would go south.
Every week, you know, we're going to change it. But if, if the no, you know, if the no at the strategic work session wasn't clear, and it ends up, and it gets defeated, and we see it again, then I think that's going to be the signal we need to change the amendment back.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I would add, Mr. Chair, I think the three came from the statutory notification, three days' notice. Which is good policy, right? You want, you want to provide, so adding more to that, the board can do that certainly.
But the number of days, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Urdeman, is the number of days isn't the intent of, of this amendment. The intent of this amendment is the voice of each commissioner is being heard. And I personally, again, I've been doing this for 35 minutes now, and have a lot of faith in our chair and vice chair and administrator to ensure that what is on our board agenda is, is what needs to be discussed from a strategic standpoint every session, or every meeting. And have that faith. So I don't see this coming into play a lot, but willing to see how this plays out.
All right, do we, does somebody want to amend that to say 10 days? So staff can.
No, she's the motion maker.
Who was the motion maker?
You were. I was the second.
No, I think Matt did.
Yeah, that's why he has to be.
If 10 days, is that what people want? I guess we'll find out, yeah, let's go 10.
Second, I'm, I'm fine with amending it to 10.
Okay, so the original motion is amended. Any other discussion?
I thought you made a wonderful point, and changing that to 10, I think, is a, a great compromise. I was not going to support this, but I think it, it stops from being sprung on person, so.
Okay, all those in favor of Urdeman Amendment Number Two say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, good job. The Urdeman Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Chair, this is born out of a couple of things. One, I know that when we redid our technology in here, it might have been a recommendation of the tech team to say, can we easily add a, a clock in the back of the room or on the screens? Provides transparency for when people are in the room. I know that sometimes people want to go past five minutes. And it's just clear to say, hey, your time, your time is up, or you have a little bit of time left. And then finally, when I was out in Monterey County, California a couple of years ago, this is something that they used, and they said it was, it was been very, very helpful. Because then they're not giving preferential treatment from one person to the other. So the proposal says to have a visible timer clock available for the board so you can be able to cut somebody off if they're going too long, or let somebody know that they've got a few minutes left. Again, back to the theme of, of public transparency and equality.
Commissioner Lynch.
I think the word transparency is overused here. I think the number one fear is public speaking. So if you have someone come up and they want to address the board, I always, we always had a timer here when I, I guess, when I was chair, when they got to five minutes, I would, I would say, we're at five minutes, could you wrap it up? And I thought that always worked really well. I think that if you actually have the timer and they're watching it tick down, it could make them even more nervous, so I'm not going to support this one.
I think you would literally get your bag lunch out.
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fay.
I too, it's not only an additional cost that I don't think is needed, and just for the respect of the people that do come up to the podium. We're all well aware that we don't have a lot of speakers in public comment at these meetings, and to have them come up and, Commissioner Lynch point, and I helped Chair Degler last year and just would say, okay, you know, it's five minutes. And then he would politely ask them to wrap up, and you're respecting their time. And, and just for them to come up and speak in front of us, you don't want to pressure them anymore than they already are.
Commissioner Anderson.
I come from a little different point of view, because I sat for 14 years on, on a board where our public comment would literally go for hours. And so needed to, at, at some point, change that policy to make it, to make it three minutes and limit that time. I guess I see this as a preemptive mood, move to have to make a change if it is needed. So, and, and I think five minutes is a long time. And when you're up there, five minutes is a long time. I, I would prefer three, but can settle for five. And I think just having the timer there is nicer than putting it on either our county administrator or, or his assistant in asking them to do that. And it's more of a subtle reminder. So I, I will be supporting this more from a proactive standpoint than anything, because we were actually thinking about making a board policy that our meetings had to end in the same day that they started. So I can see, I've been there and seen how public comment can take over a meeting. And so I see this as a preemptive, preempting that potential of happening.
I probably should have made the motion first before discussion.
Would you like to do that?
I will, yes.
Okay, I have a motion for Urdeman Amendment Number Three.
And I will second that.
And a second. I work for an organization that has a three-minute clock with a beeper. If they didn't have that, because 30 people will sign up. I don't know that we have that problem. I'm assuming our staff would run, run the timer. Like the previous other discussions we've already had, will this then also apply to commissioners?
Huh.
That was, I don't think that's the intent.
Is that in regards to community announcements, for example? Or just when we're talking?
Anything.
Commissioner Urdeman, I think the intent was just for a public comment. And, and let me also ask this other question, is having, having a clock that counts down or, or tells you how long you're speaking doesn't necessarily mean that we have to cut them off, correct? It's just letting them know how long they've been up there.
Well, this as comments will be limited to.
Got it, okay, you're right.
I mean, we could start at that zero then, instead of count it down from five.
Right.
And then, when they get to 15.
And who's going to manage the clock, Mr. Chair?
Krista.
No. Colin's got enough to do. Just a couple of comments on, well, first of all, the time, that's in your board operating rules of five minutes.
Yep.
And it does say comments are limited, however, by tradition, sometimes you let them go over, of course, et cetera. But it's kind of like the art of being the chair, right? Trying to, but from a technology standpoint, yeah, Colin, Colin can hit the clock, we'd have the screen down, you could see it there, counting down like a shot clock, right? So the technology's there.
Yep.
So it's just more of a policy question for you.
And, and again, I'm fine with limiting it to five minutes. And depending upon who the speaker is, it's the privilege of the chair to say, you know, go ahead and finish up, you give, I'll give you another minute, you know, whatever. Again, I have PTSD from board meetings and public comment that, that went on a long time. And then we're talking about detailed financial information at midnight. We don't meet in the evening, so hopefully we won't be meeting that long. However, I, I just think it's, it's a way to, I want to encourage people to come and speak. It's just communicating with them how long that they've been speaking. And, and just managing that moment is, is more of it. So we can get back to the business, you know.
I think all of us up here have been asked to speak somewhere, and could you just do it in two minutes? And you're there a lap, or longer, and because you do not realize the amount of time. I think this is a very minor technicality. If we can do this politely for the residents who want to speak to us. I, I know that I've seen speakers come up who've gone over five, who I could have listened to for 10 more minutes. So perhaps the chair asks, asks the board for a nod of heads and consensus if the speaker can continue, unless somebody doesn't, doesn't want that. So I'm not going to get all excited about it, a little piece of technology in our, in our boardroom, I guess.
Mr. Chair, could I just make sure it's clear to everybody? We're talking about a visible clock, not only to you. Thank you, Colin, sorry, you got it up there. But we, we, I'm guessing Colin put the screen down, and you'd have it there, so the speaker up. Well, you'd have to put this one down, because people at the podium would be looking this way. That's what this language would do, is want to be clear.
So it's just going to be a light?
It'll be a clock.
It'll be a clock on the screen.
Like on your screen.
It's on your screen.
I see, okay.
Oh, you can put it right there.
I need your responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't seem very obtuse that way, other than some big, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that eliminates the cost factor, I thought.
Now, there's really no additional cost here.
Okay, any other discussions?
Only that, only that you've made a good point. You said, can this be done politely? I think this is the opposite of transparency, because you're making the person nervous. Because we're going to listen to you for five minutes and that's it, so.
If I can maybe comment, Commissioners. What we could easily do as well is.
Why don't you step up to the podium there? Introduce yourself.
Four minutes and 35 seconds.
This guy can talk forever.
Keeps that up.
Pitch in for River City Days or something.
Yeah, exactly. Commissioners, Colin Leck, part of the Cover County IT Office. As you know, I manage the AV equipment in the room. We could easily make it so that there is no clock facing the speaker, and so that they don't know exactly how much time they have. Eliminating the need for them to know, okay, I have five minutes, I see a clock, it's ticking down. But your screens, we could have a five-minute timer on, so you know how long they are, they have been talking. So that way, you know, but they aren't having to see something in front of them saying, hey, you have five minutes, or you have four minutes, or you have three minutes, or two minutes, or one minute, or, you know, whatever.
Well, Commissioner Urdeman, I think you kind of want the speaker to know so they can adjust their, whatever they're saying, get in what they want. They can see, I've got one minute left, I better move it along, or?
I, I think there's flexibility to see how it plays out, but yeah, it's, it's not meant to be. And I gotcha, I've, I've gone times, and it's like, oh my gosh, I've gone 10 minutes. If I would have known and looked, or we were in a forum situation where I'm like, how much time do I have? And they let you know, right? I think if it's discreet up there, if you get to speak and you're probably not going to look at it anyway, you're going to need that reminder. So there's an opportunity, I think, to put it on that back screen, maybe the front screen, right there, all within the same couple clicks, right?
Correct.
So a lot of technology flexibility. But the heart of it is, is that transparency and make sure it's equal for all.
Correct. At the end of the day, there is no additional cost to the board in regards to the technology that we use in this room.
How come when you got up to speak, the clock stopped?
Good question, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I would like you to know, to be clear, where do you want it? So if you want the back in there, that's fine. You can also put it there. It's up to you. You can put it on that podium screen right quick. Up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it.
I, I'm not loving the screen thing.
No. But yeah, if you can put it on that screen, I, I think that.
And, and again, it's, as Commissioner Workman said, or Chair Workman said, is, you know, we have the discretion to say, hey, you know, go ahead, take two more minutes, or, or whatever. As a person who teaches public speaking, what I find is if you tell people they have a minute, they, they are more succinct and clearer on their message once they know what that time limit is. And so it's, it's, it's also a strategy to, I agree, people get nervous. And so this isn't about that, it's not a gotcha. It's a tool to help them understand how much time they have, because you can lose track of time, and us just manage the meeting.
Okay. All right, unless there's any other questions, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three to two. So we passed the amendments. Now do we need a vote on the whole thing?
I hear you, you did.
We did?
Yep.
Okay, thank God. All right. Item 1.9, adopt schedule of regular board meetings for the year 2025.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the schedule? Do, I lost track of why we are meeting next week.
I think one of you had a, had a scheduling conflict.
Okay.
And we've done that kind of throughout this, we're to try and accommodate.
I like it.
Some town trips, whatever. Could I, could I ask about this, these dish meetings? That, uh, day first when our files. That, uh, Dave Freshman, our Fire Director, had sent some emails around. He was proposing on February fourth, a couple different options. Uh, one of them starting at eight o'clock instead of nine o'clock for County Ditch six, nine, and ten, and then having another session at eleven for County Ditch two and three. These are hard to predict, and Commissioner Fahy can help me give you more insight, but it really depends on who shows up.
Right.
It might be pretty controversial for some folks. Another option would be, we just leave it started at nine o'clock. Right, as of right now, on the, on the fourth, there are no items, but those could come in quick. But up to the board, I don't know, JP, if you have any comments, what preference?
I thought we'd go with the Freshman's recommendations. I thought that, uh, if they run long, they run long and we'll have to make changes then.
We gave you two options, one starting at eight versus nine.
Right. Eight and ten.
Eight and eleven. One of my concerns was, I told him, well, we don't want to blow up the regular meeting, right? And just have that consume the whole thing, which would be maybe the advantage of starting at eight. Uh, but that would need to work for everybody.
Wait a minute, what are we, starting at eight?
It'll be the, the regular session and the first item would be these ditches.
Oh.
And then for six, nine, and ten, and then we'd have the rest of the meeting and then another ditch, bundle of dish, well, two, ditch two and three at eleven o'clock. I would recommend that, so we, so we don't take the whole meeting out because of these ditches.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that too, date to start at eight and then, because, uh, County Ditch two dash three is probably going to be the largest with the impact. Personally, though, I have not had any phone calls to date regarding, uh, County Ditch two dash three, so.
So all you'd need to do is move the nine o'clock to eight o'clock on the fourth and we'll do the rest of it behind the scenes with the packet.
I'm not sure I even have a ditch that day.
Why, we haven't put these formally on the agenda yet. We were trying to get it done in January and then a good example, they just, they're, they're so potentially time-consuming. I was trying to figure out maybe an alternative date. Shot for the eleventh and that didn't work for their attorney, for our attorney, and we definitely want him around. So we get a motion on the schedule?
I have a motion in a second.
We do?
Commissioner Urdeman denied the second, correct?
So you're the motion makers in the second, are you okay moving the fourth to eight AM?
AM.
And eleven AM.
Well, I don't really even need to list that here because we'll, we'll put that in the packet. These are the county dishes, so they're part of the regular session.
Okay, got a motion, a second to approve the 2025 board meeting schedule. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item one point ten, committee appointments and assignments. All right, so we traditionally go down the list of things that your county commissioners are going to be keeping a close eye on, in the, in the new year, and there's many of them, so let's move quickly. AMC County Board of Directors, I believe that's traditionally the chair. Um, is that the District Ten?
That's District Ten.
District Ten meeting?
You don't have to have it as a chair, but.
Okay, who wants to be it?
I propose the chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I propose the chair.
Commissioner Fahy, you had?
Yeah, I've been attending, uh, those meetings just as the alternate when, uh, Mr. Degler could not attend. And so I've been to a few in 2024 and I would be willing to serve as the main liaison.
Why don't we do that and then Commissioner Workman will be the alternate? Does that work?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I'd also add, historically, you've gone through this discussion and made these appointments and then adopted all of the appointments as a slate.
Right.
But if you need to pick off some, just be aware of that.
Okay. I'm going to assume Lynch would stay on natural resources for AMC?
Yeah, I can, unless someone else wants it.
I'll stay with the transportation. Urdeman?
That, that's fine, or I could, I can flip to general government if Commissioner Anderson has preference on some of these.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Commissioner Urdeman. I would, um, prefer Health and Human Services Policy Committee.
Okay.
So if you want to, if you're willing to do that, that'd be great.
Commissioner Fahy, you're okay with staying at public safety?
I am.
Okay, AMC voting delegates. Um, I think, I think, uh, the change would be Anderson would be added to that.
Correct.
And remove Degler. CAP Agency.
I will take that. They're expecting me to.
Okay, Commissioner Urdeman, you okay alternate? The Carver County Arts Committee. I would, I would stay there. Commissioner Urdeman would stay there, Carver County CDA, Fahy?
I would like to, uh, continue on the, the CDA. Mr. Chair, just being on that CDA board and really do enjoy those meetings as a liaison and I think there's a lot of great opportunities coming forward with the CDA.
Okay, Commissioner Urdeman, are you okay being alternate?
I can stay as alternate. Um, I, I do know that, um, it's probably not fair if we go down all these and just replace Anderson for Degler, so this might be an opportunity if Elise or somebody else had an interest in some of these. Sometimes it's just, I know when I came in, it was like, well, we already have ninety percent of them already determined. And so I think sometimes the conversation of, this is a point in time where, CDA, look at all the applications. There's a lot of interest in CDA right now and I think it's the first time we've ever had legislative priorities. Housing has been on there. I think we've got a new leader there. I think that, um, there's a lot of press at the state level and federal level and it's not going to go away. And so it might, it might be an opportunity for us to consider, you know, what, what, what different might look like, uh, shuffle the deck a little bit. And if not for, um, CDA, there'll be other ones up here as well. I just don't think it's fair that we just go carte blanche and you get the scraps or you get whatever Degler had before.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Urdeman. I, um, at some point would be interested in serving on the CDA board. I do feel like, um, had a lot of conversations about, uh, this board and there's a lot of changes happening. And I think that keeping the liaison for this, this year makes, um, a lot of sense and keeping Commissioner Fahy on, um, for this, this year makes a lot of sense. And maybe in a year from now, we can talk about a, a different liaison. But I think having that consistency with all of the other changes happening on the CDA board just makes sense for this year.
Do we know why there were two alternates for this? Commissioner Urdeman?
I think it just expressed the importance of it. I think there was also recognition that Degler had some institutional knowledge and he knew he was going to be moving off. So probably makes sense to make you second alternate, um, if, if you're interested. Doesn't preclude anybody from coming to those meetings anyway, but, uh, it does give you a chance to, to be part of it.
Okay.
Ken?
Mr. Chair, can we back up to the AMC General Policy?
Yes.
Was that Anderson?
Urdeman.
I'm gen, I'll show you the HHS.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, so CDA, Fahy, Urdeman, Anderson. Carver County Leaders, Urdeman and Lynch.
That's fine.
Good, good?
Yep.
And the new commissioner can stick her foot in the door, uh, on anything.
Thank you. What is the Carver County Leaders? I'm familiar with the community leaders, Eastern Carver County.
Mr. Lynch?
We haven't had that for quite some time, have we, Dave? Um, we've had some issues with, um, union issues, so we haven't had that for quite a while, have we?
Well, there wasn't union issues, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lynch, but, um, some, the history, really briefly. Uh, that was created to, and modeled after the Scott County Scale Group. Ever heard about that? Which was, I, from my view, very, very, uh, effective. Uh, our attempts, and this is, this is all the leaders across the county with their own, with bylaws and appointments from cities and school districts and us, et cetera. Uh, our attempts to really get this off the ground weren't real successful. So we've, we've tried different angles, uh, we stayed away from intentionally lobbying legislative issues. But quite frankly, the attendance has been extremely low. I would actually recommend, uh, eliminating it, it's just, it's just been not real fruitful. And, and what we've talked about is, well, let's put issues on like transportation. But most of those issues we're talking about there are talked about elsewhere, right? It's become a bit of a duplication of effort. Uh, and Nick and I just talked about this, like for, uh, it was upcoming, I think they're held quarterly or every, twice a year at least. Uh, the chair, the chair and vice chair they appointed just sort of disappeared on us. So that it doesn't seem like the group, we, we could really get the buy-in. I mean, it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, to, to bring all these leaders together. We never just were able to get the buy-in.
Do we need a motion to eliminate it? Commissioner Lynch, and I know this, uh, this leaned heavily towards our township leaders and others, which is why.
Should we let it ride for a year to see if there's interest again, or do you, do you think we should eliminate it now?
Well, it's been, uh, in progress for fifteen plus years. I don't, you know, uh, these types of things take commitments from the individuals.
And Matt, you were at several of these, would, do you have input that, think we could eliminate it, or?
I think the goal is pure. I think that if you haven't gotten off the ground in fifteen years, it probably makes sense to just rip the band-aid off and it could resurrect itself in a different format if, if to be done. I don't think we're losing anything by getting rid of it today.
Yeah, good point, uh, Commissioner Urdeman. There, there are multiple ways to get at this particular, uh, what they're trying to accomplish in the area of transport. Well, look at cannabis, for example. That was really, to me, a very successful ultimately effort to bring, bring these, all these groups together and talk about it and unroll it. So, yeah, that, that's what I'd recommend, I'd take it off the list.
Okay, we don't need a, okay, that would be a part of the, uh, final motion to eliminate. Community Leaders, I would suggest just adding Anderson to that. That would be kind of the District One Twelve-based group with mayors.
And I, and I attended that, um, for many years as Chair, Vice Chair of the Eastern Carver County School Board. So I, if they're willing to have me back, I'll take.
Mr. Chair, too, some, uh, history on that one. Apparently it was started as a visionary group, is what does the future look like collaborating together? And it became more of a task-based, what's your update for the day? I know Elise Ryan has been successful in articulating some things that are a little bit more vision-based and future-based versus task-based. And so I, I favor us, you know, dreaming into the future of how we can work together. None more prevalent, I think, than the, the library coming to Chaska or, um, the bus garage in District One Twelve. I think with Lisa having spent time on that board, she knows that world a lot better. And how we can maybe, maybe find some more value, more amenities and less cost for our taxpayers. So I think that this thing will pivot and grow in a more visionary way than a task-based way.
Um, agreed. I, um, yeah, the original idea was, um, to be clear on who's going, where our taxes are and, um, talk a little bit about as a, as a county, um, you know, where they are. And it has gotten a little bit more task, um, based. And, um, I think it's time to be a little bit more vision-oriented and, and I have some meetings lined up to, to talk about that as well. So, although I am, don't want to overstep my role here either, but yes, looking forward to serving on that again.
And we have a meeting coming up fairly soon.
It's usually quarterly and they had one in December, so what, in March? Commissioner Urdeman? I would imagine it's March or April, something like that.
Sheen High School, Austin.
Yep.
Okay, Courts Committee, Degler no longer here, uh, Workman would be willing to be on the Courts Committee. I heard there's lunch served at those meetings. And I'm interested in the Courts.
They're interested in you.
Jeez. My fan club over there. Uh, County Strategic National Stockpile, that sounds like a chair deal, I'll, uh, replace Degler there. Uh, Fair Board.
I can, I can continue, Mr. Chair.
Okay, alternate Fahy?
I can continue.
Okay, thank you. Hennepin County, Hennepin Carver Workforce Development Board. Urdeman?
And I, and I would like to be the alternate for that, that's, uh, an area of interest to me as well.
Excellent. Historical Society Committee.
This is one I'm interested in, Tom. Uh, Commissioner Workman?
Okay. You want to replace Workman? Fahy, alternate?
I will stay as alternate. Those meetings generally are the first.
Thursday or Wednesday.
If you're the first Thursday, they're about the same time as the Fair Board.
Yep, they're an hour before the Fair Board, so I would go to Historical Society and then go to the Fair Board meetings because they're half a mile apart.
Perfect. Health Insurance, LMC.
I'll move up to that one if that's okay.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to have a whole lot to do in the next year because, um, but I think it's good.
Shall I be the alternate?
Sure.
All right, Joint Ditches, can we just say we're all, uh, in agreement? Are we gonna, literally replace Degler with Anderson?
Because I'm assuming that they're based upon the district we are representing.
Right.
So that makes sense. And I don't have any ditch conflicts, as far as I know.
I mean, I don't think there's.
Someone's, can, can some survey my property and determine that, but I'm pretty sure I'm good.
Well, I don't think I have a ditch in my District Two.
Oh, I don't.
You wouldn't either.
So.
So this is just a way to make it seem like.
I might, I might know someone who has a ditch.
They're very prestigious though, because Commissioner Urdeman's a vice chair of one of these.
So I would direct staff to just replace, uh, name Degler with Anderson.
Can we, uh, back up, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, I'm not sure they're all related to the, the district that has your di, these ditches.
Yes, we just confirmed that, they're not.
Okay, just want to clarification.
Yeah, I don't have a ditch.
And I wa, I was removed because I was on the ditch that drains my property, so.
Right, so we needed a quorum there, that sort of thing. Okay, thank you.
Law Library Board.
What is that?
Should find out.
Anybody?
I'm naming Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a wonderful law library.
I, I'm, I'm, I've seen the law library, I, what's, uh, I'll, I'll take that, I'll take the law. How often does this meet?
Weekly, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I do that a lot.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
The law library, it's not heavy lifting and you'll meet with, I think Judge Wenzel serves on the law library and it's, they meet infrequently and so.
Sounds like a committee for me.
Yep.
They have, uh, some statutory authority through fines to raise revenue.
Yeah. That's why your speeding ticket is only twenty-five dollars, but it comes out as about two hundred dollars. Law Libraries and Southern Valley Alliance and all sorts of stuff.
All good.
Legislative Committee, I've asked to be back on there.
I'd like to stay too. You get compliments, general government policy as well.
Okay, Workman, Urdeman.
Commissioner Workman? I'd like to thank you for taking interest in that again, I.
You were down there yesterday.
So just for clarification, it's going to be Workman and Urdeman, do you want me to be the alternate?
That'd be great. Law, or Library Board.
This might be an area, um, Commissioner Anderson, of, of interest if, if you want it. I'm happy to be the alternate or the main. Reason being is Library Board is at a place where, um, there'll be a new Chaska library at some point. Um, they're talking about the merge of HHS, you know, utilization of library space, this is at the macro level. Uh, mental health, I know has been a passion area, um, and then utilization of space in Victoria for expanded access, which, um, dovetails into workforce and other things as well. So happy to stay on, it's, uh, they meet probably eight times a year. But, uh, happy to make room for you as well.
Well, thank you, um, Commissioner Urdeman. I thought you, you would want to stay on this, but I would be, um, interested. Would you want to stay on as alternate or, um, how, how would you want? Would you want to stay on as alternate or how would you want to work that?
Makes no difference.
I'll go ahead and, and serve on that and you can be the alternate.
Cool.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Lower Minnesota River Watershed. I know they're trying to decide whether or not that thing should exist. And I know they've got some, an open house coming up. But I think you gotta, your district has to touch that watershed to be in it. So I would assume this would be another replacement for Anderson?
Correct.
Yep. Oh, I see. Yep. It's by my house.
MCIT Voting Delegates, Emzie and Sonia Walter. Keep that?
Yep.
MELSA.
So, Mr. Chair, MELSA, at least I know you know some about this, but for clarity, one hundred and three libraries roll up to a regional library system. The board is comprised of the trustee, the president of the St. Paul Friends Organization, and then commissioner from every county in the metro. It is a powerhouse of talent, particularly female talent. I'm the only male that's on this board.
Oh, then you should stay on.
I, I do, but I, but I do think it's, I, I do think it's a good opportu, opportunity if you're interested because it meets with the library directors regularly and there's a lot of momentum. And again, it's a powerhouse and almost a, it's a good group of people to learn from, especially some of the county things that are going on. So if that's of interest to you, I'd be happy to be an alternate. If, at a minimum, I'd love to have you join me for a meeting or two so you can see what's, what's all about.
Yes, I'm interested. Why don't I be alternate for that for this year and then we'll see how that goes.
I do know that the Carver County Library Board position and the MELSA position traditionally kind of go together.
Yep.
Uh, Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I've been on here for quite some time and I have talked with Commissioner Anderson. She's a great interest of hers. I think they're tired of hearing about me and suicide prevention because it's touched so many families. So I think that Commissioner Anderson would like to, to assume this position.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. I don't think anyone could get tired of you. But I don't know, I may change my mind on that.
Alternate Ouderman?
I'm talking to my wife.
I'll talk to your wife.
M E S B.
I think.
Twenty twenty-five Carver County Chairs this committee?
Carver County Chair.
When do they meet? Do we know?
They just reached out to make sure we were aware we were the chair this year because it rotates.
This would be a great one for our chair, I think, maybe, huh?
I agree.
Commissioner Fahy has lots of knowledge here.
Yeah, I've been the.
Well, why don't we skip over that while you're looking at that?
Okay.
Unless you want it.
Oh, yeah.
JP, would you like to be?
We can come back.
Let's come back. Uh, Metropolitan Emergency Services Radio Technical Operations Committee. Susan Bowler and Deb Page, let's stay there.
Oh, Mr. Chair, Deb Page retired.
Oh, that's right.
Someone we missed. Benjamin Ruder. Is that, is that who you want there, Chief Deputy Burry?
I think at this time, probably being the emergency manager, Ben Ruder could probably sit on that.
As well as the nine-one-one technical operations committee?
Yes. But if we put Cam Rude on it, I will not be making that nomination.
We're putting him on the mosquito control. I think, I think the room generally loves our sheriff, so we can have fun with him. Okay. Okay, Metropolitan Solid Waste Planning Group. I think Workman should stay there. That's.
If anyone knows solid waste, it, it.
I did request to be on the AMC Study Group on solid waste and we'll see what happens. MICA. Commissioner Fahy.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that. I've been continuing to get more and more active with that group.
I can, I can add myself back to that. It's been a while.
I hear Matt is gonna be chancellor at some college. He moved on. Is that right?
He's gone. They're hiring right now his replacement.
Unless somebody else is interested. They do meet down at the Capitol and I'm usually there. Mihaa Creek Watershed District, Workman and Ouderman, since that touches their district, won't we stay with that? Extension Committee.
I would like to continue.
That's of interest if we pursue extension for some of the services we talked about. So I, I could be an alternate to Commissioner Lynch.
I don't see an alternate here. I see.
I think there's two people on there.
There's two people and they're both voting members.
Commissioner Ouderman? Can you make sure they don't change the Master Garden Gardener Program for me? Thank you.
So do we add an alternate?
No.
Okay, good. Sometimes we need to check with their bylaws to see if they allow that. That's fine.
Minnesota Valley Regional Rail Authority, Commissioner Fahy.
Yeah, I would like to continue.
All right, Workman will be the alternate. A wonderful organization. Mobility Management Board, Smartlink. Commissioner Fahy?
Currently in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, I was the chair of that board.
Wow.
So I would like to continue.
Okay. Mosquito Control Board.
I hear that's a fun board. Um, I, Fa, Commissioner Fahy, you are already on that. Do we need two people on that board?
Yes.
Uh, the first one is the Executive Board.
Got it.
The second one is the Control District. The Executive Board generally meets maybe every other month.
Wednesday morning?
Yeah, and the Commission meets like four times a year, five times a year.
So if you're the executive, you'd be every other month, kind of.
Yep.
But if Commissioner Anderson. Yeah, if you want to get on the Control District.
I guess that, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that would.
Okay.
And, and then, then would you want to move up to the Executive Board?
I would.
Okay.
Okay. Park Commission.
I can continue, Mr. Chair.
Okay, alternate is Ouderman. Planning Commission.
I would like to continue.
I can.
Lynch, alternate? Regional Holling Holler Licensing Board. How's that alternate working for you, Lynch?
Good, you never call me.
I don't think they meet every two years or three. Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed, Workman, and I'm gonna put Anderson in there.
Yep.
Southwest Corridor Transportation Coalition, Workman and Fahy.
Yeah, that's just a lot of discussion about Highway two twelve, obviously, and now a lot of discussion about Highway five.
I am currently on the board of that, not just general men, membership.
And just with it going, with Highway five, with all those meetings, if there's any individuals from that district that might want to get on the Southwest Coalition, I could be the alternate.
Say, say that again?
The Southwest Cor, Corridor Transportation Coalition.
Right, so it's Workman, Workman and Fahy with Degler as the alternate.
Right, if someone else from Highway five.
Like Ouderman?
Their district or. Yeah.
Commissioner Ouderman, you interested?
Uh, not particularly. I do think that the work of that group will probably be west of Victoria after five is built. So.
Okay, so Commissioner Fahy, do you want to withdraw from that?
No, I can stay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Does anybody want to be an alternate?
Do we need an alternate?
Probably not. So let's leave it.
Uh, could I, could I just get a clarification? I think they got a lot of work to do on Highway five through Victoria.
Right, for the next.
For foreseeable future.
For yours, for sure.
But it's up to you, Commissioner.
But really, this organization presses for the funding and the funding is falling into place.
But even, you know, Victoria, even east, but up to you, Mr. Ouderman.
Lyndon, do you sit on that too? The Southwest?
He goes, yeah.
Yeah, Lyndon.
What's the, what are the big topics of the next six months, year? The funding, is it operations, is it vision?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yeah, it continues to be funding. So we do have, as you know, the big job fully funded to the fire station, Eightieth Street. But there's, the next piece would be from there to the Dairy Queen Roundabout. That one's funded. So there's a gap there in Victoria. Beyond that, there's been some discussion about, should the Coalition get more involved with Highway seven? You know, there's a piece of Highway seven in Carver County. It's a very dangerous road. And the momentum at the legislature for that, to improve that, would be probably a good discussion point for the Coalition to get involved with. As well as the, obviously, the, the big intersection at Roland Acres at seven that's not funded yet as well. So that's kind of what's hanging out there. Then west of there, what's the long-term vision for Highway five, you know, to Oconia and beyond to Norwood? On two twelve, obviously, the work's pretty much done, except for, you know, as the city, Carver develops, there's gonna be a need for an interchange at forty-three, probably another overpass by Fleet Farm. So I don't think two twelve's over. It's just, you know, it's kind of paused for now. So I still think there's a lot of work to do. It's just a matter of what happens when. If that answers your question.
Thank you. Yeah, if you think there's an alternate need because of the geography that I represent, fine, throw me on there.
CHS Advisory Committee. Fahy, alternate?
That works. Richard Scott does a phenomenal job. Got a lot of emails.
Transportation Advisory Board. Commissioner Workman is gonna make a return visit to that. And Commissioner Fahy, will you be the alternate?
I will.
Water Management Organization, Lynch and Fahy, alternate.
Sounds great.
That works.
How about Commissioner Fahy, the Emergency Services Executive Board?
Yeah, I looked that up. The last time they had met was in November, the second Thursday, and.
It's, what, an annual meeting?
No, no, they meet maybe six times a year. So, yep, I could attend that meeting.
Okay. How about I be the alternate?
Perfect.
I think that is the end of it. And I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, you do.
Oh, do we?
There's a slate.
I move, uh.
Hold on a second. Kristen might have one.
Well, it's the Metropolitan Board. Who's the Executive Board? Who's the Board?
Which one?
M E S B.
Uh, I think isn't Fahy on both of them and then Workman's the alternate?
Yeah. The Emergency Services Board and the M E S B? Commissioner Fahy? Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Second.
We had a motion by Ouderman, a second by Lynch for the committee appointments and assignments for twenty twenty-five. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Appointments to Advisory Committees. How are we gonna track these down? Should I just go by this grid?
Yep.
Yep.
Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Robin. It's not necessary, but he is in the audience today. He's been attached to that, does a nice job getting out and looking at the properties and looking at the law. So I would move him ahead and then Amanda Gora has shown herself in a number of areas to be capable as well. So unless there's objection, I don't see that there's anybody in District one if you're intending somebody else, I'd move both Robin and Amanda ahead for, for Board of Adjustments.
Commissioner Workman, I did have a conversation with Amanda Gora. She is, she is actually a District one appointment. Sharp takes that role very seriously. She's been, as far as I can tell, a really good member of that board. And so, but also support that and Robin as well.
Okay, so. Robin Beelfelt. So technically, the district representing side would have one from each district in there, correct? Although they don't all live in the same one.
Correct. So Amanda is, is District one's appointee, even though she doesn't live in District one.
Okay, are we gonna approve these by acclamation or?
I would do them one at a time.
One at a time?
Or both together here in this case. Do you want Amanda to represent District one?
I do.
Okay, so Beelfelt and Gora. Do I have a motion?
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. There we go, in a second.
We got a motion and a second for the Board of Adjustment. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
CDA.
Mr. Chair, I've got, in District three, boy, there's a plethora of quality candidates. I mean, I don't think we've ever had this many people show interest and then this many people apply. But in District three, I'm gonna move ahead Kaylee Hega to be the representative for District three.
Commissioner. Kaylee Hega.
Hega? I, I'm, maybe staff can help me read this. So the current, there's current vacancy in one and two, and then colon Commissioner one and three.
So there's two vacancies. There's one in District one, one in District three.
It just says vacancy one and two versus.
Oh, those aren't district numbers. Okay, that's why.
And so for, for District one, I would also, I was pleased that there was so, so much interest on this board and for, for this. And I think it speaks to the mission of the CDA. And so, so grateful that there are so many people interested. I would like to nominate Sylvia Metacoli from District one to be the representative there.
I'll second that. I don't know if you want to bring them forward together.
Let's bring them forward together, yep.
Okay, if we're allowed to do that. So Sylvia Metacoli and Kaylee Hega?
Yep.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Library Board. So I have a vacancy and I'm having a hard time tracking down a cou, a couple of applicants in my district. So I'm not gonna make an appointment today on that. They're both, look like really good candidates.
Commissioner Workman, I do have an appointee today.
Okay.
And can hold off. I, I would like to appoint Orne Bavarsen to the Library Board. If you want to wait until next week to appoint them together, I'm okay with that as well.
Let's, let's do that today. So I'll take that as a motion and a second for Ouderman for Orne Bavarsen. I do pronounce names better than Degler. Not, not much stuff, but I, I don't know.
I don't know, you know, that remains to be seen, actually.
I'm not gonna leave Gail alone. So I have a motion, second for Orne. So I have a motion, second for Orne. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes and I, and I'm gonna wait.
Okay.
And I had, this gentleman wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Robin Beelafeld, Chairman of the Extension Committee. Um, I just wanted to speak in behalf of Nora Ashawati. She's an incredible public servant. She ran for office for Chanhauson City Council this last year. And I would certainly hope that he would consider her for the library board.
And I certainly am. And what was your name again?
Robin Beelafeld.
You're our, you, didn't you just get appointed to something?
Board of Adjustments.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, uh, Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd move ahead the two applicants, Brianna and Latoya. Latoya?
I would sec- I would second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for those two applicants for the mental health board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Park Commission.
Mr. Chair, a lot of quality candidates. There's, uh, there's a large in a District Three. Um, I always like to go to the quality candidates. Um, and I, and I want to point outside of district. I'd move ahead Dave Pascoe to serve for District Three. And then if Commissioner Fahy's okay with it, Charles to serve as the at-large for the park board.
Charles Vanderweist?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I talked with, uh, Charlie and he's, has a young family. They are big users of the current park system within Carver County. I think he would bring a lot of talent to the park commission.
We need to get some District Two, uh, people on that board someday.
And District One.
Men of Washington. Okay, so Charles Vanderwaes- Weist and David Pascoe. And I have a motion.
I would second that.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Urdeman moved and Fahy seconded for the Park Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Personnel Board.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Gerald Bruner. He's a current member and has been, uh, for quite some time. Well, they have another wonderful candidate, but, uh,
he's a representative on the side to make the motion.
I'll second it. I'll second it. Um, so I have a motion, second of the Personnel Board of Appeals. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair, listed as objection, Matt Kerber has served for the last four years. He's a great mix of understanding, um, development and growth and business ownership, but also farm kid. Um, he served, uh, reputedly for the last four years and comes with support from some other members of the board. Unless our lays on opposes, I'd move Matt Kerber ahead to serve four more years.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, concur. Mr. Kerber has gr- has brought great value to the Planning Commission and a lot of insights being a commercial developer.
So there's a motion and second for Matthew Kerber for the Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I enjoy when commissioners from District three and four see eye to eye. I really enjoy that.
That's Mr. Lynch.
Oh, are you four? Five, sorry. Three and five. Well, I like it when Lynch agrees. The WMO. I think that's mine. I will go ahead and move Kevin Zoller. The man has more energy than I'll ever hope to have.
And I would recommend Kellen Schmidt for the District Five representative.
Okay, so I will make that a motion for Kevin Zoller in District Two and Kellen Schmidt in District Five. Um, we have a Bevins Creek. Do we have anybody attached to these creeks? In their applications?
Bevins Creek would be District Five and East West would be all districts. Where they reside.
I'd throw Joe Pollan in there.
Yeah, I would support that, Mr. Chair.
I would too.
Joe for the East West?
Yes. So the motion includes those three names, Zoller, Schmidt, Pollan. And we're gonna leave open Bevins Creek. Or should, so we, do, do they need to live? Is that like a watershed? Let's wait.
I have to check that one.
Let's wait. All right, so I got the three names. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That's it. Let's see. Approve the November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four Truth and Taxation and December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Regular Minutes.
I'm going to abstain from this since I wasn't sitting on the board at that time.
And Commissioner Workman was not at the Truth and Taxation meeting. So.
Now that these work sessions are recorded, you'll be able to watch them.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion, uh, quick question, maybe for Attorney Metz. If, if, I don't know if you're abstaining, Tom, but if two abstain, then does it lead to a majority of three votes?
No, you have to have, you have to have three for it to pass.
So I have to pass, if, if two abstain, it'd have to be a three oh?
Correct.
I'm just, for clarity, thank you. I will move it ahead.
I would second.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November twenty-sixth and December seventeenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I abstain. And Anderson abstains.
I abstain, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, going back to that water management organization, just reading the application from I think it's Mary.
Stassen.
Stassen. She actually lives in we live in the largest holding pond that drains into Eastern Creek.
I don't think so. She's my neighbor.
That's what she says in her application.
I had no idea the creek was that close to my neighborhood. I, I do, my sump pump runs all the time, so maybe that's why.
So if we would going back to that, um, East West Carver Creek, if we make Mary that appointment and then the Bevins Creek appointment.
I mean, I would support Mary. She's, she'd be great on whatever.
We made Joe Pollan the East West.
Correct.
Um.
Cause Joe lives in Waconia.
Right.
So why don't you make him the Bevins Creek?
Well, I think we were gonna find out if you in fact had to live in the watershed. Were we?
Yeah, we, we have a few to bring back. We can bring this one back. This one, this one's confusing.
Yeah, let's wait.
This one is. But it, but again, Mary would be good on whatever.
Joe lives in the city of Waconia.
So we don't think Joe lives there either.
Watershed either.
I don't know. Yeah, why don't we hold off on all of them? We'll put it back on next week.
So do we gotta withdraw our motion?
Less Nick knows.
We're pulling all WMO?
We don't have to. Uh, Kevin Zoller.
Yes, you got.
And Kellen Schmidt. There's Megan White.
This is getting confusing. Didn't we vote on this?
We did vote on this.
I would vote.
But, but since, since we voted, don't we have to rescind that?
I would move that we rescind WMO and revisit it at our next meeting.
That's a motion.
I would second that.
Okay, I got a motion.
It's still not completely clear.
Yes.
Second to rescind our previous action on the WMO.
Mr. Chair, just an amendment to that motion because we're just looking for the Bevins Creek and the East West Carver Creek appointments. We could go ahead with Kevin Zoller and Kellen Schmidt.
Well, let's withdraw the motion first. And then we'll make a new motion.
Okay.
Anybody want to discuss further? Good points. Okay, got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. New WMO motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to appoint Kevin Zeller as the District Two representative and Kellen Schmidt as the District Five representative to the WMO.
Got a motion? Second. And I got a second from Lynch. Discussion.
I'm, I just, I, I don't, I don't abuse it, but I think that if, if we're clear on the totality of the makeup of the board, it just makes prudent sense to just hold off and make them all appointments. I'm not objecting to the, the ones that are coming forth, but and perhaps maybe in the next week, somebody else comes forth too. But with Bevins and not knowing where it fits, I'd just, I'd be in favor of holding off and making the right decision in a week or two.
And, um, Chair, I, same. I mean, I'm new here. I lost the plot a little bit, so I'd like a little bit of, to, um, time to, to look at this all at once.
Well, this isn't a real highly sought-after committee. I know, I mean, so I've got my second district guy and Commissioner Fahy has his fifth district guy. You know, I don't know what's gonna change. I'd rather tell Mr. Zoller he's my guy. Um, he's very involved.
Yes, he is.
Um, so I, I'd rather go ahead and name our guys, get them out of the way, clear up the Bevins, uh.
All right, and, and, and I'm fine with that too. Again, I'm i- if, if naming two people and holding off on one is the, the direction, I'm fine with that as well.
Well, I think we're holding off on two appointments. Bevins Creek and the East West Carver Creek.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. We got a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Okay, I got Commissioner Fahy moving the consent agenda and Urdeman second. Commissioner Urdeman.
Um, Dave, do you, do you know that, I know there's something brewing at the Capitol of not having to post into a newspaper and the associated cost. And I think last time we spoke, it's roughly ten thousand dollars that the county spends to publish and post things. And I know Tapke had a bill that was to potentially, um, be approved to do so for the next three years citing, um, newspapers like the Chaska Herald, Chanhauson Village are going away. You know that if we're, are we still statutory required to publish a newspaper and is that going to change or is that talks to be changed in the next year or so?
Commissioner, or Board Chair Workman, Commissioner Urdeman, yeah, we are statutory, stat- statutorily required. I wouldn't hold my breath on that changing. We proposed that in the past. Now, a lot of different dynamics, but we'll, we'll work on that. Not on our list, but I I'll, I'll put a bug in towings here to keep in tabs on that.
Yep.
The newspaper lobby was pretty strong. Uh, cause it, I think it became apparent in the nineties, why are we, why do we have to print this in newspapers and your financials and all the stuff? I don't know much it all adds up to, but it's a lot. Um, well, because a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of people that don't have computers, so, but I don't know uh, if that's anybody anymore, but, um, maybe I'll find out how, how that's going, but that seems like it would be a good piece of legislation. That could be in our legislative, uh, agenda, but so anyway, two point five, uh, is a part of the consent agenda for the newspaper. So. And I have a motion and a second and no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to recess as the county board and convene as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
I second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to recess as the county board and convene as Carver County Regional Rail Authority. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Appointment of Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary Treasurer.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could, these are very important positions and historically, they've always went to the Chair, the Vice Chair and, and whoever sat in the middle is the Secretary Treasurer. Unless you would like to mi- mix it up.
I third, I third.
I had a motion to, uh, appoint Commissioner Workman Chair, Commissioner Lynch, Lynch Vice Chair and Commissioner Fahy, the Secretary Treasurer of the County, Carver County Regional Rail Authority. Any discussion?
Sounds great.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Lynch.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority and conve- reconvene as a Carver County Board.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority and reconvene as county board. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch, and second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. County Administrator Report.
Just a quick note on the upcoming meetings. There is a meeting next week. Did we line it at eight o'clock or not? We moved that to eight.
I thought that was February.
It was in February that we're moving.
Scratch that back up. Okay, so there's a meeting next week, nine o'clock. Uh, we did miss a township meeting. Listing that on the agenda. There is a township meeting next Tuesday night at seven at Bandy's Grill.
At Bandy's?
Those that are interested, uh, Ari will create some talking points and we typically have you share those. I think we're talking about cannabis. That's the main topic that I remember. Not, not a lot of controversy left in that for us anyway. More to come from other angles, however. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion to adjourn by Anderson, second by Urdeman. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Bang.